We also get started. All meeting to order. Additions to the agenda, it's like we have one. A new proposal. Anything else?
On the old business personnel, the superintendent search, I'd like to discuss the advertisement language.
It is on that superintendent search. Anything else? Additions?
Also move. Second.
Move in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Alright, consent agenda minutes of the last meeting. Opportunity to read those. Corrections or additions to those? All right. If nobody has any corrections or additions, we can, we can keep moving on to January board bills. Questions on that? At the end of January.
Two hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. That is the electrical bill for. Each vac and either the fire. Connections. Bridge. So basically that project. Hundred eighty-eight thousand from Jay Thompson's son. Six thousand. And what we got for the one over T R E with its end. Of course. But we currently do not have enough money in the building fund. Would like to. Word's permission to transfer that amount.
We need that motion now. Okay, do I move to transfer twenty-six thousand two forty-seven from? From the general fund, is that right?
Savings.
Excuse me, savings too.
So then when we get that money in, are we going to transfer that back into? Savings or what, how does that? We can't transfer.
I'm not sure if you can transfer.
Right, that's, yeah. So are we, I'm assuming we're fine. Savings wise still leaving after the C D moving and all that stuff?
Yeah, we've got money, extra money.
Right. Okay, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, any more discussion on that? More discussion on? Can't see none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same side. Anything else?
Kind of curious what the running time trust. Unless it isn't, the interest statement is.
Is four.
Is that quarterly or is that?
We made one payment, one just interest payment a year, and then we made a interest and support payment a year.
When we look at balance sheet, there'll, there'll be money on there, but I don't know, sinking in interest for all, that's where you see that. Money that comes in to pay this. Okay, anything else on board bills? After that, we can go to balance sheet.
Fund number four, service sinking in interest. Have two, two hundred twenty-one thousand in there. See, these are Dakota Community Bank, looks like there's four ninety-three thousand. Do we need any questions or clarifications on balance sheet? Okay, revenue next. Not a lot of district property taxes in yet. What do? Spending shares, if there's no questions on revenue. We halfway through the year?
Yep.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda discussion. Can't see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. High school girls basketball, that's fifteen hours. Seven graders. High school boys basketball, there's thirteen participants. Junior high boys basketball, seventeen participants. Speech starts. That's important. Pass something up first. Few things to talk about and we can go on to the other days.
So before I get into the calendar, we'll start with just like a quick building report, so. Through December, we worked on teamwork, which is really nice, just having kids identify ways to work together, working as a team. About that price and cost goals, but be able to achieve those goals. This goes as classroom to classroom. And then moving, starting last week and moving for the rest of January, our expert is going to be leadership. So for folks, growing leaders and continuing to try to have students share with me on the data news. You know, what's, what's a leader to you, what's a way that you can be a leader today, so. I've seen the benefits of having students share those ideas with other students, so. We'll be working on some leadership. Some quick maintenance updates. Last Friday, the boilers weren't working, I believe it was an easy fix. Maintenance outside, we were just frost over, so there's no way to get through. So we got that taken care of, they were able to kind of take down the boiler and clean it out too, so. That was perfect timing, because then Monday, the boiler inspector shows us, and defense inspection, so. That would have been better timing, actually. And then the fire signature gentleman came back out, he just, he updated all those three tag notes, make sure that they're all working well. There's one of those in each classroom. From our last board meeting, you guys, a two, a sound system for our gym that'll be installed this weekend. As of Sunday, possibly even into Monday, we have a P D day on Monday, so the gym will be. So, thank you guys for that, because that's actually a quick turnaround to get that installed, so. Leave you guys some updates at the next board meeting on how that went. I'll go to the first point on the agenda that asks of the school calendar, I believe this is in your resources holders, you guys can click on this on your computers and look through the. School calendar, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Alongside myself was Mrs. Vivinius, Mrs. Christensen, Mr. Weber, and then Mrs. Coons. On our days of meeting was, was driving bus, but she gave Mr. Weber her input, so I was actually gonna be that one together for this school calendar. It does cover the one eighty-three contact days for teachers, one hundred sixty-eight student contact days, ten days of P D. Three holidays, and then the two days of the parent-teacher contact days as well. So as you look through it, if you guys have any questions, just feel free to ask, we like how this school year started with. The in-service day. Not required day, probably. The first day of school, so we kept that. Graduation, another important day to highlight would be Sunday, May twenty-fifth. Make our last day of school, May twenty-first.
So we'll start on the twenty-first, or the twenty-first?
Yes. Did he realize that's enough? Yes, that works out nice. Yeah, and the twenty-two and twenty-three are built in for those first note days if needed. Then the main, May ninth, P D day does align with A M day as well.
Very close to this, Mr. Keller.
Yeah.
Wait a second. We will need your approval, so. Okay, anybody have any questions on this?
We talked about that for a long.
Right, because just yesterday, they don't want to come back on Thursday or something.
They don't want me.
We are coming back.
Yeah, we don't want to back.
You don't want to come back, so we know.
And then.
That is.
It is what it is. It's a, we said it's a short.
Yeah.
Oh. Really caught a hello. Okay, there's going to be questions. Someone like to entertain a motion?
Take a motion to accept the calendar.
Okay, John moves.
I'll second.
Seconded that motion, any more discussion on calendar?
Okay, see none, all in favor say aye. All the same side. Motion carries. Moving on to my second bullet point here, the H U I M grant award, that's a link you can click on as well. What this is, this is actually one of those perfect timings, goes back to the, oh, we're back to beginning of our school year, we found out. Very late as some of our security people are coming to an end, our wonders reading curriculum in particular, maybe found out a couple weeks before it was about to end, so we renewed it for one year, we had a one, three, or five. Year option there, but we won't fill one year just to get through this year and evaluate the reading curriculum. So what this, this grant is for is. I had immediately, the Department of Public Instruction about our reading curriculums. It's based on the report that I submitted, and they gave us a lot of ideas of ways to enhance our reading curriculum. One way, last time I talked to you, I loved that letters training with Mrs. Christensen. So one way was having an additional staff member go through letters books, you know, the more, the better, but they, they are recommended too, so. Vivinius will be going through that letters training as well. That kick off actually is tomorrow, and that two-year course tomorrow. Another way was aligning with what our reading curriculum, let's call it the science of reading. How the science of reading, how the brain learns to read, but also the instructional practices, that's important. So it's all focused on how our brains actually learn to read. And so what this grant was for, it was ranged from ten to fifty thousand dollars of award money, so we filled out the grant and we were actually awarded the full amount, fifty thousand dollars. Going towards our new re-reading curriculum, so in the packet I gave you, the first page is just your knowledge of this, just some science of reading principles, principles that. That thinking and how the brain learns to read, what that's based on, and the benefits of it, and how it. How it benefits the students and the instructional and the teacher. The second page here is just a little bit more about that grant. It's got to be used directly for that purpose, so we can't spend that money anywhere else, it's got to be used for curriculum that's aligned with that science of reading. And then going off of that, so we were awarded the fifty thousand, which is awesome, so on that last page, on Friday. Going off of that grant, there's a curriculum evaluation event, and what they do is the state holds. A time where schools, staff members can come and they present the science of reading curriculums to the people that are there, they present it in a way through this what's called a reading rope, it means all the literacy skills. Needed for at the end goal, here you see the rope for a skilled reader, so all the skills that go into that in order for you to be considered a skilled reader. So Friday, they will present a number of curriculums to us, but also explain to us the materials used with those curriculums. How those curriculums are tied in with these literacy skills, so that will allow us to make the best decision as a school district. On the reading curriculum that we want to move forward with as well, so we do have a team going on Friday as well, there'll be four of us going. It's just a really good opportunity for us to pursue the science of reading and enhance our literacy program and our reading curriculum as well, so. That's what that grant's money will be going with. Fifty thousand is a nice amount, so I'm happy to gather.
So that buys a curriculum, is it for so many years, or is it?
Maybe close to three, close to what the drop hole was. Well, I guess it just depends on the curriculum chosen and advanced that forth, but it is only for K through five.
Yeah, so. But there is a select list of. Sure, ones that we have, that they're going to be presenting, and that's the ones we have to choose from, but some of those go up to grade eight. Although, we are saying Mrs. Tutterell as well, if they find something that is a K through eight, that would be an excellent streamline. With the curriculum. Because now sixth grade is going to have to go with juvenile. K through five. Sixth grade is currently using the wonders. Kind of a transition for them. It would be nice if we could find one that was. That's the decision that the team is going to have.
So we buy a curriculum these days, are we, are we actually buying textbooks, or are we just buying online subscriptions, or? Sometimes you have the option. Because there's always that, okay, this covers us for three years, that's awesome, and then what's it cost on year four and year five?
So going off of what you're saying here, so part of our requirement as a team to go is we have to watch a, a video that kind of talks about what's going to take place on Friday, but we also have to fill out a curriculum audit. So basically, we're looking at the curriculums that we are currently using, what materials we're using, what materials don't we use, what materials might we find beneficial if we have, so we'll, we'll have all of that information with us as we're looking at these additional. Curriculums as well, maybe to help fill some gaps or. I've always wondered. Just what that, honestly, especially if that was at your level, you know, so. We'll have a lot of information to be based on.
Hopefully, there's not a lot of subscriptions.
That's always gets me these days, so. Online stuff is great, but then all of a sudden. Your fork comes along, oh.
Well, I wonder if they wanted. Forty-five thousand. Forty-five thousand and five. And that was up to eight, great. That was six, 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 six.
So this was a program that was recommended by the state then?
Yes.
The curriculum?
Well, that is specific, regardless of. I'm going to this event, because everything presented will be aligned with the science.
Okay. It looks like this was part of S R funds that the state decided to use. Fifteen or something like this. Wow.
Good work, good plan.
Certainly.
Good work at finding that.
Yeah.
So then, the idea would be then we would select curriculum, get that purchased, and line up training. Go, start school at the beginning of fall, ready to go right into the curriculum. No waiting for training and stuff, we want, we'd like to get it, so. We'll start right away.
Sure. Should they do that on some?
Well.
I could think to find that out.
Once we select them afterwards.
That's all, Paul, thank you for that report. We did do it, sorry. I'm pretty bold.
I'm working with the state for Mr. Muff, Mr. Muffly is here soon teaching right now. And we're working with him to obtain license, they are very happy with how we have everything set up. He is being mentored by Mrs. Chris Barks, and he is co-teaching with Mrs. Kronk and Mr. Kohler. So we would be able to slide him into the fifth grade split, so Mrs. Barks could spend more time on small groups, bringing him out. So that's what we're looking at right now, I did get a call from E S P D yesterday and said everything looked great, very happy how they're looking, and they'll just call back in the next few days. So I won't put anything out, I know Mrs. Barks and Mr. Muffly put a little bit out about student-teacher part here and helping out and stuff, but. When we change things coming here, we'll send some information out to parents, knowing that that is coming. With calendar approval tonight, that'll be programming the district calendar for next year, and course schedule, color school starting tomorrow morning. So thank you for that, we'll get that going in. Dual credits offered in house for the spring semester through Bismarck State for our instructors that we have in-house, including Mr. Kohler. He will have U S history for three credits and problem of democracy for three credits. And one is junior class, one is a senior class. Mr. Weber, he is now qualified with enough credits for college algebra for four credits and pre-k help for four credits. So they can take those as junior, senior, or senior. And then Mrs. Quinn, she was not one that was approved for the school to assist for masters. She got approved and is going herself, she has enough credits and approved by V S C to teach college algebra this spring for four credits. So we have two history classes, two math classes, and now one science class. So that is awesome, with that turnaround, we went from having hardly any in-house dual credits to now the kids can get eighteen-year junior, senior in-house.
What did Mrs. Quinn say?
Biology.
Did you say algebra?
Okay, I was really confused. And then you said science, so I was like.
No, it's college biology.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, which is awesome, she happens to have most of her classes staff around biology, and she'll organize enough credits to start teaching. Thanks for catching me. Then we have our late fusion courses that we offer, and the students over the past few semesters started with Dr. Peters, about a year and a half ago, if you remember. We ended up with a couple here, a couple there, we have doubled that with our schedule offerings. We have fifteen students this spring taking seventeen courses. And they include public speaking, college compositions, industrial design, operating systems, those are the main ones right now. There's other ones that they can take based on their interests, but that's just what they wanted to get out of the way at this point. And that includes sophomore juniors and seniors. And then, so we have some really good things going, I mean, kids can get a lot of credits here, so, right now, so that's fantastic, and we hope that continues.
What is the democracy?
Problems of democracy, it's P O D, it's their senior history class that they're required to take for the state.
Okay.
So now he's, he's able to teach that to a group. So also, working with Miss Bright, she had a real life biology class the last year and a half, maybe. For sure, three semesters. We cannot get into our I C T C's health careers past, we have a lot of people that are interested in health careers of the last half year, year. And we got a lot coming up that are interested in health careers, so, um. Working with both R A C T C and with Rhonda Shower and then C T E. Right now, Rhonda Shower said that their health careers wasn't asynchronous at the I T D at this time. Um, so I worked with Miss Frank and the C T E department for the state and looked at her classes because she comes from medical back, background. So with her medical background and what she has as a master's of education degree, she is now qualified as C T E instructor. Um, so the students will, that take health careers, um, will have more options while we field. It's always up to the doctors, whoever they allow or not. There will be some closed doors some places. Um, but she will be able to now start scheduling health career options for them to go out during that class, which is awesome, because you want to see if you really want to do that and what the day looks like. Um, she'll have some other access to relay things that they will be able to send her, so relay. Biology and health careers that way, and then that class will now count for students as an extra C T E credit versus state scholarship payments and also as an elective graduation. Um, with our A C T C, actually, our innovation today, Rhonda Shower was there, um, we talked about the asynchronous options, since they have both I T D and asynchronous, so. Um, and asynchronous is just that they're recording and you can take it anytime, it doesn't have to line up with our periods here. If you remember when we had I T D, had to line up by our hours, sometimes we were starting ten minutes late and getting out late or getting out early and. So with this, it's just like this, you can dual credit or any other N D C E class online, they can just log in, take the class, so, um, she will be getting me a list. As, they're just finishing that up right now, their team is working on that today beside us, and they thought by the end of next month, we'll have that, and then the kids will have those options. So, that is all that happens. So good things, good options?
Yeah, are you, thank you. Any more questions? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Vogel. Old business, start with personnel, superintendent search. Uh, let's go for it, association. And, uh, we'll start with Damian had a question and concern basically about how we're as a tenant, we want to talk about our.
Yeah, I guess.
Posting the position. So currently, our search is posted as a superintendent slash principal.
Which is what?
Which is what we, is what we need here.
Well, that was a discuss having. So how did we get to superintendent slash principal, when the discussion was superintendent? It was voted on with the salary range?
Yeah, yeah.
Rough descriptors?
You know, it wasn't asked, I mean, Alexis didn't even ask us, did she? Alexis said, yeah, we're doing this. How we've been posting?
Alexis didn't mention that we would post it the same way we had it posted before. And we all assumed that was. Oh, yes, why would we post it the same as we had it before?
Why wouldn't we?
Because it's.
Why wouldn't we post what we need to? I mean, that's currently what our program.
Well, I guess that's part of maybe what I need informed as a board member is, what, where does this need of a principal, how is this coming about?
I think all that wants a Dr. Vogel or a Mr. Bronson.
Well, Jen Frank left us, what year? I thought Jen Frank, Jen Young. She was a part-time principal and part-time counselor, or was it? Twenty, um, after that, at that time, we were focusing on teacher raises. And we decided to pull off with that part-time principal. And so Dr. Peters came in and, um, they were, actually, he wasn't the only one, there was multiple applicants at that time. But he was contracted as that part-time backup principal and then full superintendent, and then so was Mr. Bouts.
So what is a backup principal?
When I'm all over the building, the superintendent, like if the teachers request anything, or if there's a student situation or anything. That backup principal or principal position, um, part of that contract, that money that was split, went to that position so that they would take care of that. And then also, some, there's, not every day, because many days are golden here, but, um, sometimes I'll have a line of four, five, six people, sometimes teachers, sometimes students. Student situations, and when the line gets long, the superintendent takes some and takes care of those situations. And it's mostly about meeting teacher and student needs so that they don't have to wait, because we can't keep up if we only have one.
So there won't money split as well, you mentioned?
Yes, so there's part of the superintendent amount included the amount that our, our, our time principal was, but it's a lot less than what part-time is for that.
Cause going back to Jen Young, we have two principals in this bill.
Yes.
One we attached. There's superintendent, right, two principals and superintendent in this building when we brought five and six over.
Four, five and six.
Four, five, it's four, five and six at that time.
Yeah, and then it's.
So, yeah, so Jen was the, what, four, five and six principal?
Yeah.
And then you were seven through, through twelve, so, so the other option is hire another principal, right? I mean, am I correct in assuming that? That you don't want to do five through twelve principal and there's not enough time for you?
I already do five. That's why it's really just when there's a line or when I'm taking care, so the teachers and students don't have to wait. Or the situations don't get larger because they're not taken care of. Yeah, so I already am dating five for twelve principal. But if I have a fight in high school and working with counselors and police and whatever, and something happens or releases, someone has to go.
Okay, the money split, I'm still following what, what, uh, was that mean, what's the specifics on that? Are we paying a superintendent part as a principal then, or are we?
I would say the employee salary includes that description.
But it's not be more than what would the superintendent be paying, not in addition to.
It's not in addition to what we had.
Right, right, that's got factored into that.
It's not going to say addition.
It's factored in, you know, that's on the.
That we posted.
So then why did we say the words money split? Was, we still follow?
History, history, so I think what Dr. Vogel was explaining was, when we, we lost Jen Young. Instead of hiring another principal, he said, okay, Dr. Vogel will take on five through twelve with the help of superintendent, which was Dr. Peters at the time. Okay, so.
And he had his, he had his principles.
Yep, yep, so we, yeah.
And if you want to know the amount, it went from seventy thousand to five thousand. To sixty thousand.
So you're saying that already if you take this, Mrs. Young's seventy thousand, a five thousand was added to both the superintendent and the principal position at that time too?
Alright, thanks for clarifying that.
Well, yes, my question is, what do we need? Um, I've got concerns about advertising as superintendent slash principal, in fact, that it's confusing number one, does it deter potential candidates? That are, um, it doesn't clarify what that means in the advertising, so. And then also, I don't, I don't guess we as a board discussed what we need, is there a need for another principal is? You know, to me, a. Leader or a supervisor helping a subordinate in situations where that arises is just kind of standard. And, I mean, I get that in some districts, like St. Bismarck, the superintendent's not going to leave the administrative building and go help principals, so we might. Need that, but I'd assume that's probably standard practice in most small schools across North Dakota. I don't guess I understand why that. If that's all we're hearing, why did that also include then? Yeah, that would be standard, why add the principal piece to it?
Can we, can we do it without? I mean, does it matter how you have?
Is there really any worded, British in the descriptions on principal duties, I mean, in all reality? In the listing for the job, is there anything in there that?
I don't, I don't know.
Says specific principal work?
Right.
Cause if it doesn't, then I guess we don't really need to have it, but if it does list specifics, principal duties, then. Sure you'd have it. But I kind of agree, like, if you're in a leadership role, and you have somebody that's a direct report, and they're either busy or can't handle, that's kind of their job is to take over. I mean, I don't disagree with that at all.
Well, is there a superintendent who wouldn't have principal credentials? I mean, is that a thing? Maybe a superintendent and not a principal?
But you're also going to have superintendents that have more of a business background.
Mm-hmm.
That.
You have to have your principals.
Your superintendent? But would you not agree that?
I think.
There's a superintendent that's not going to perform those principal duties.
And that's probably.
It's mostly for teacher support and student support, that's really what it was, so that they don't have to wait, and that it can be taken care of. So if it comes down to your safety or anything like that, it takes care of.
Right.
I think we should ask if, if, ask Alexis if she thinks that deters anybody from applying, you know, it's a fair question, I think, to ask. Does she think it would affect anybody in mind?
I mean, you want to be up, I think you want to be upfront with your advertising too. I don't think you want to advertise superintendent only and then say, okay, by the way.
Right, but if it doesn't, if the by the way isn't in the description of the, in the listing, then. You can have a by the way about anything, so that.
You know, maybe we should have been there. I mean, what, what do we, I, okay, what do we want?
That, that's the primary question, what do we need, what do we want?
I mean, if our, if we want to have a superintendent be able to help principals, then I should advertise that. Correct, I had that, maybe we got to add that in the description. So it clarifies.
And, and just like Damian said, so it does let somebody know what the expectations are, right, not just saying you're going to be. Maybe they're assuming they're handling five and six, or, you know, whatever, and that might, somebody might say, I'm not really interested in doing that anyway, you know?
Well, that part either needs clarification, or to me, those pieces we can clarify in the interview process. But you have two things, if I'm reading this, I'm thinking, okay, is this actually a, a split superintendent part principal, so I'm like fifty percent. You know, is that going to affect my wages, how is that going to go, am I going to be expected to do more principal versus superintendent, it just, I think it just clouds it, that's unnecessary. And then I'll also add that some of the history, for instance, like having Jen Young as a part-time principal, part-time counsel. I actually have a lot of concerns about that, like, especially in that role, an administrator that's also a counselor. I mean, I doubt that a middle school student who is contemplating suicide is comfortable going to a principal or counsel. We, we have to consider those types of things, and I know that in the past, we've had people where that rule just fit by the person that it was. But I think we err on the side too often as a school of having these combined, um, roles that maybe aren't well thought out. So I'd really push if we were thinking that we were mining that rules or something like that, that we at least discuss those kind of things here before we make decisions on that. And, you know, dare I say that we've got a lot of staff, a lot of it's good, but that are certified and working on provisional certification and, and that type of thing. And, and there is a reason that we have an education standards and practice board and those standards, and, you know, having those lines, it, it. I understand that at times, it's, it is good to have someone that works on a provisional license or that, but it shouldn't be what we're trying to do, especially not trying to find a superintendent. What I mean is, does this welcome in a, a principal who has superintendent, working on superintendent? And, uh, you know, and maybe doesn't have those credentials yet, you should be trying to get the individual that does have it. First, and if we end up in a spot where we have to look for provisional, then.
I think, I think the history of the school is that it's always been looking for somebody that, hey, we're looking for counsel, we want a counsel. But we can't always find them, so we have to work with trying to educate somebody into being a counselor. You know, to make provision, to cover a slot.
That's not the case, we, and we can talk about that after the meeting if you'd like, but I don't think we always go about that.
So what do we want to do? I mean, back to the matter at hand. Do we want, want to see our superintendent is going to help with principal duties or, or not? Question is.
But if we do, we need to, I think, draw out what those duties are. So, like I said, it doesn't necessarily deter somebody from applying, because they're not going to be.
The main roles.
Cause to me, the things that were brought up are things that should be done, hey? By somebody that's, would be in the superintendent, whether they have the principal tag or not, that's something that they should just do.
Do and help always.
I would suggest that we. Perhaps develop that list of extra duties, if you will, for during the interview process and that. That procedure, but what I'm wanting to address here is how we advertise specifically. And I make a motion that that principal piece be removed from the advertisement, to avoid. The unclarity of that.
Even though we still want them to help with principal duties.
Yeah, certainly, I would suggest that we, if we consider those extra duties that are not typical, that we at least know what those are, re-upon those with current administration and as a board. And discuss those in the interview process, but I think that that complicates our advertisement. To have that principal role, that slash principal.
Okay, so we got a motion right now to change our advertisement to superintendent.
I guess my question is. Well, I, I, I'd like to, number one, figure out what those duties are for sure, number two, talk to Alexis and see what benefits. You know, consequences might happen if we do drop it, if we do keep it all the way around. Before we go through and make a motion to change it, I think we should gather a little bit, I'm not disagreeing that we should, we shouldn't. I just think we should gather a little bit more information before we say. Let's do it this way, um, and if we have to have a special meeting next week to address it, then let's do that, but I, I don't. I don't know about doing it right now without having all the information we need.
Yeah, I'll say Alexis was not available to speak to that. Well, I'm, what's our administration?
I, I can function with backup, backup such as to support the teachers and students and the rest of them. Um, Mr. Bouts has done those backup duties, so the teachers don't have to wait, the students don't have to wait, Dr. Peters the whole time did that. So, so, um, if, if you choose to not advertise it and get straight superintendent, and then you choose not to do those duties, we would have.
I mean, I think it's, it's to me important that superintendent.
I guess you'd have to ask Mr. Bouts how much work he is.
So everyone's called T.
Not everybody thinks that. That's.
But I think, I think we'd be hiring the wrong person, you know, going through that interview process, talking to the person, if we hired him and then he ended up saying, well, I'm not going to do that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Then that's not somebody that I think we'd be interested in wanting to hire to begin with, you know what I mean? I think that.
When you're applying for a superintendent job, would that deter you seeing that principal slash principal?
Cause I wouldn't want to do.
Right.
But I do come into a small school with an understanding that I'm here to have a principal.
Right.
So I do whatever I need to do.
I think that's why.
But I, I think where Dr. Vogel's coming from, you got to remember that she's also the. But I, I think where Dr. Vogel's coming from, you gotta remember that she's also the district lawyer. She's got lots of hats.
And we have a lot more kids in our school.
Now you're going from five to twelve.
And maybe at some point you could really bring some of those on, you can get a librarian. I mean, it's easy to change. We wanna make the change on the advertisement. Or if you wanna do it to. Make the advertisement change and then say, hey, with the provision that we are going to. Alter the description a little bit and make sure that we, we include this in our, our discussion on. But to me, that's just a narrative that you provide with, with the, to the candidates.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm from saying that it would deter.
Meeting even if it's a phone call. I mean, that's something concerning. Wait a minute. Can't even do a conference call.
That would be fine.
I would, I would just like to bolt it off.
Yeah, that's what she does. Oh yeah, yeah, absolutely, I mean.
So, I think one of the things we have to keep, if we hire somebody. She said he would, he would not apply, then we gotta figure out what to do, then we're gonna wind up hiring them. Somebody, a principal.
Right, I know, he, he said also.
If he said no, he's not gonna apply, I mean, that may, may stop.
Take the elementary principal off and put in the superintendent's job description that he's assisting. Principals, I mean, I'm sure that's in there already.
Yeah, there's not much of a description, it's a procedure right now.
It doesn't matter if you have it or not, you're gonna have to do it, so, I mean. If you get somebody sitting there and you say, would you help the principal, and he said, no, you're not working. So. We're looking for slash principal.
Well, but, but I think it's misleading because you're not necessarily doing principal duties. Unless.
Right.
There's help, I mean.
Well, and, and we need to clarify that, you said, we need to clarify what, what is this? So when it comes for the interview, then we. We just gotta make sure we have everything covered.
We are asking.
Exactly.
But not every day.
No, no.
But no, but when, if I, if I'm going across and I'm looking, okay, superintendent slash. Right past. I understand it as a superintendent. And maybe you put assist in, you take the tag off, put assist principal as needed or whatever.
What clarification are we looking for for the lesson? Well, I, I would ask her, you know, yeah, what opinion is on it, then how. How to word the job description to include, help, help on the principal work, but we don't have to talk. So I just, I just, that becomes a superintendent. You can't.
And then just change the description as.
Yeah, or maybe you wanna amend the motion just to say that, that will. Clean the advertisement up to straight superintendent and basically ensure that we add a description that. We will expect that person to help with principles or help with principles if needed. We could take that this time, and I could send that, I could go Alexis and have her change it tomorrow. I'm fine with that. I mean, I.
As long as they understand they're gonna have to help a principal, then I'm good with it too.
We can't.
I mean, I don't wanna change our intention here, but I just wanna make sure.
And just struggle with the fact that it's, we have too many kids over here.
And not necessarily one principal, just that they would have to wait. It's mostly about helping officers.
So if they ask you the question, you'd passify it, so if you came in as interviewed and said. I mean, you already said you'd passify it.
Well, if I was looking, I wouldn't be looking for a superintendent slash. I would look at that and say, oh, they're looking for someone to do superintendent plus elementary principal or something.
Do you wanna remake a motion? Yeah, if you wanna add the, the motion that the job description include the. So necessity, but the assistance to the principal, to the building principal. By, well, how we wanna word that.
I would, I would check first the job description.
Yeah, I don't see a job description anywhere, guys, I'm not seeing that at all. I don't know where, now I was looking at the N D cell. Does have the job description.
Yeah, so. That, that evaluation that you did in Sanford is based off of that job.
Okay, is that a motion? A motion for a second? Second of that, so. Okay, and more discussion on basically, we'll say, your advertisement up to superintendent only. Got to be more discussion on this. Okay, if there's no more discussion, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, so I will call Alexis tomorrow. Change the posting, superintendent. Get the. We'll figure out the job description portion of that. Yeah, so far I'm not seeing. Well, the school association said at the application, I'm not seeing any description either. I'm gonna hurt to get that ironed out soon.
And it just says superintendent vacancies too, it doesn't say.
Yeah, on the school association, it didn't say that, and that's my question. Alexis put it on the N D S B, a how it got on the.
Just said superintendent.
N D cell is the slash, so. Yeah. It's on the N D cell is where it has. Okay, I will call, I will call my team. Type, and then also under the superintendent. Search category here is Alexis has currently. Um, a folder on a, on a Google Drive that she shared, I think a link with myself, I can remember. Okay, these are applicants that were, that are coming in for this, for our position. She asked me if the full board would like access to that, that Google Drive as well. To look at it, so you can see that, and so as they come in. Her warning, her only warning was, you have to keep this, at this point confidential until you announce. Who you're gonna interview, I believe, so, so yeah, she can get us access to, to that, all access to that drive. You just have to remember that it is, it's still a confidential business. That was her only warning or caveat, was just, just so. So I can have her do that as well. Like everybody kinda uses their personal email. Okay, I will do that as well. Anything else on superintendents? I think we were talking about. At the February meeting, were we gonna go through interview questions, or have, at some point, we're gonna? Right now, we have a deadline this February, yeah. Did we have a good number of applications yet, or? Just one? That was, that was. And then. Yeah, final selection of February fourteenth. Interviews late February, so I guess. My only thought would be monitor this as we approach that February fifth and determine if we need to extend the. Deadline, so be able to do that, you know? I don't think we have a meeting before then, right, so. If we need to do a special meeting, we can. Anything else? Okay, all right, if not, we'll move on to the next item. And collaborative bargaining, bargaining company.
Yeah, we met with the team. We agreed to. Take, well, we negotiated, I'll put it back in, so everybody gets their. They were gonna take it back to their.
We're waiting.
But they were gonna take back to their.
We haven't heard back.
Plan is to put that.
Basically, yeah, that's the meeting, all agreed. Gotta get the right language.
So you can.
Yeah, I.
Everybody to review it. Also suggest that we make sure that we run that through legal, make sure that we don't have disjunction.
Because in speaking with. You need to talk to. They're the ones that are supposed to be. That's why you need to speak with the leadership team, so they can. Sending it to her would not.
The only thing to watch was that our collaborative, collaborative bargaining.
We sent them learning for. How we wanted it back with was, we want this. I think that's what was provided.
Yeah, I can understand that she would have wanted.
Acts, but. That would be simple.
Yeah, we, we can just distribute that to them. Oh, they do have the right cost.
Operation. They say we need to write that. I'm way more about the night.
But I can help. It's gonna be very simple.
Well, stay there, but I mean. So we're gonna, we're gonna work for, we're gonna write up. There's a standard.
Okay, all in favor? All the same side? All right, roll into new business.
We got an email from M D U.
Yeah.
They have, they have been charging. Basically. They're not gonna go back. Yeah, put, put off you. Put football lights.
They can go back, but he's suggesting they don't go back, but they can.
What he, so if you open up that, you'll see there's an Excel spreadsheet in there. Apparently, we own that transformer down there. Old transformer, so. His proposal would be to. Do a.
It's hard to explain.
To. Basically add more meters. To then, for example, the football field lights are on one rate and then. Scoreboard and that sign down there are different. So, which I think those are a little. The other, but if we don't do that, then we're getting charged. So it would be my recommendation to go ahead and work with M D U. Get that transformer replaced. My understanding from reading that email was that. If they would, they would replace the transformer, then that would be their responsibility. And then that way if something happened to it now, then it's our responsibility.
Exactly.
Transformers. So we don't have to. We don't, but that's, it's not like we gotta get that through and for you.
No, that's right.
We pay for it, but.
No, I, I, I read.
There's different rates for. Cause you're hammering it out all the way. Two months of the year.
Yes, a rate of twenty on the general electric use and a rate of fifty-two on the outdoor. It's a, it's a less than half. So on that spreadsheet. Try to read this, right? The new metering and new transformer will be paying, paying nine dollars a month roughly, estimated. For all field lights. During the month that we use it, that, that was a per month, right?
Yeah, I read it.
And then on the month we don't use football field lights, it's, it's not. Scoreboard and that service was estimated at sixty-seven dollars a month. That would go down. When the usage goes down, of course. But there was still a base charge on. If we don't change anything. Scan that middle row of that spreadsheet, it was eighty-one hundred and thirty-two bucks a month. For the football field lights. Eighty more, eighty more that they turn on. And a hundred and forty more dollars a month. But every month they turn on. And even if it doesn't get. And scoreboards. This made it the football. I, I also understood that there would be some electrical work that we would not require collection for. The. Get the, basically the electricity to the meter from our scoreboard, from the lights to the meter. They'll put everything into the meter, but we gotta get it to the meter. That was my understanding. And you will provide a transformer.
See, right now with the transformer. That whole, that scoreboard. Breaker box.
I think we, you almost got it.
Yeah, right, well, if you tell me don't, then they're making good. Oh, okay, we're gonna go back to two thousand eight then. You know what I mean?
So. So they eight hundred and one hundred and forty.
Yeah, that's.
He was very specific that he would suggest not to go back. That day, like you said, he has something to hold that for instance.
So just a, just to recap, if we go with their recommendations, they provide a transformer, new transformer, to get rid of the old stuff. We provided an electrician. To, to rebook and connect it. If we just assume this is a small enough. And I would assume that this is gonna be a spring. I, I swear since, but they want it from, they want us.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, yeah, basically. Yeah, sorry, yeah, great, great. So if we say, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and fix it. Say no, we're not gonna do it, then. Only the motion to go to M D U's suggested. Okay, see none, all in favor, say aye. All same side? Okay. And. The tuition agreement is for students. I would take the district, we have students who. Is in the Riston. So is it accepting the tuition waiver?
Yeah, we're sticking to the.
I'll make a motion to agree with that. Okay. Second, session. All in favor, say aye. All the same side? So just for. So. Tuition agreement. If you do a tuition agreement, I. Only from the other county. If you do a tuition agreement, we have to fill out the opening form right away. Then with the opening form, and you can fill the other school district form. Opened roll, this student was living in. On our school district and then moved to Dickinson, but they would still like to attend here, so the deadline for. Cause they currently both still, yes. And they were moving in the school district. Wherever you move from the school district. State you have. The deadline for. Okay, basically the student here. All right, so I have a motion. Open roller, these students have been rolling. Oh, second, second right now. Any discussion? Open roller. Basically, all in favor, say aye. All the same side? Okay, these are some policies that I think are. We did have F D E. I did post that one. Two thousand ten. Update it. So the motion for the F D E. If I move to the man as presented in first reading, wait the second reading to. Policy adoption process per board policy. So added policy P D A says that. For goal a second, we can inform. And then. The F D B B R is for regulation, then only reporters one. Okay. So two seconds. Yes. And then just to clarify, we have, I saw the old F. That's the bill which is, which is larger service better. And we do not have any students in the district that are paying for this thing. This came about. This is all tied to the Title I line, so we have to. Homelessness, foster care, English, language learners, Title I, school line. We just have to dumb it for the halls. Yeah. About it. Okay. So make the votes. So I'm realizing that motion sometimes it's almost, it just doesn't get turned. Having here. Pulls around. Does it handle the. Then. We have to start with. To a man or. Oh, I forgot. I moved to the end percent. Oh, okay. Does anyone have anything to add to that? F D B, education for homeless students. First reading, wait the second reading. That's like the policy adoption process per board policy. All same. Okay, that's why I'm. All right, we got a motion in a second. Anybody have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All the same side? They had a motion, yes. So that's what we.
So on the three.
Yeah.
Yes. So all we forgot part of the regulation that. B R is teaching.
Okay, one second. Counting seconds, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Say not motion, yes. This is students in foster care didn't have. It just came out two thousand eight. That's it, we're basically doing the same. Same thing, anybody have any questions on, on that policy?
We'd be using the same liaison for foster careers, we'd be homeless.
Yeah, we use the. Administrator secretary. Sarah Conlin was called.
Is there any reason that we don't use Housework then?
Um. Basically, cause we use. Use Conlin, cause she has access to all the information. And she also has experience with social services. She has connections to people. She was. She was in social service, so then it's a big thing. We have a counselor taking care of, helping take care of the L L.
Five or four.
Five or four. Yes, sir. Once it's, if someone's reported this, and the way it's reported is they have to, when they register. If they are identifying them that, then we could get a team together and then there's. Quote unquote, individual assessments, maybe go through like how, what do we need to do to help this get, what services to. Sure. Whether we have the policy or not, we would do that.
Well, right.
Okay, I don't do that, F D H student in foster care as presented in the first reading, wait the second reading to expedite the policy adoption process per board policy. Okay, motion for the second. I didn't say that one, more discussion on that. Any saying, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Carries. I'm moving about the board regulation, F D H B R one foster care student rights. Translational. Awesome, second slide, any discussion on that? Foster care transportation. Okay, see none, all in favor, say aye. All the same side? Here, motion favors. One more, moving about the board regulation, F D H B R two foster care student transportation speed resolution procedure. For a second on that? Seven seconds, that, any discussion on that? Okay, see none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? All policy up. All right, R D C.
Should be having a meeting last year, playing with me, we had Senator J Elkin and Representative Joe Elkin. We had, he was up there on some of the bills that were passed last session. Some of the things that we're looking at coming up this section, transportation. Maybe. Dean, you got him, going out of the district. Oscar lot, so. Good deal. Yes, the others, guys. Oh, people get to meet and, need to send it. Yeah, it's gonna be four center, he's not ready to go there. This is one for the president. I think I'll break in the present. I don't think. He's gonna, he still owes for this year. Okay, Dave. Good. Uh, Jake, can I ask? R E S P A.
They did have their meeting in shape for merging. They're beginning. And it'll be. And it'll be. So does that pretty much the whole western part of the state here, the ends together? Pretty much. Are there going to be four, aren't? Will we just southwest a little bit? Yeah. Good, okay, next meeting Wednesday, February fourteen, six P M. Last meeting to have a special. All right, uh, meeting.